We are convening the meeting of the Board of Education. Everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Brennan?
Pledge allegiance. United States of America into the Republic which stands one nation under God in the best world with liberty and justice for all.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of July 19, 2007.
Second.
President Garcia?
It's been moved then properly second. Any corrections? Commissioner Elliott?
Yes, I was not at the last board meeting, but I did read the minutes. And in the, in Dr. Kala's remarks where it discusses that he attended an anti-racism meeting, I think we need to specify what organization that meeting, that meeting was. That, that needs to be stipulated in the, in the minutes. The reason that I think we need to be specific about this is because, because these documents are for posterity, for historical purposes, and we need to make sure that we have as specific information in the minutes as possible. So did you, I know you were talking, but did you hear what I was saying, Linda? Okay. And then also in reference to the, the last statement where I would imagine that Dr. Kala had introduced some administrators. My concern about that is until we vote on them, they're not officially administrators and the wording should probably be that they're candidates or to be administrations, be administrators, excuse me. So some language to that effect is what we should use to make sure that we are doing the business of the school district with integrity.
Dr. Kala, what's the name of the organization mentioned?
It's Anti-Racism Movement, better known as ARM.
Is there anyone opposed to those two amendments to the minute? None? Any other corrections to the minutes? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We will move on then to speakers addressing an agenda item. And we have, we have a number of speakers, so please, I urge all of those who are going to speak to follow the three minutes that we have allocated for each speaker and as soon as you hear the bell rings, please conclude your remarks. The first speaker is Tiffany Young, followed by Clara Brohmack. Tiffany Young. It's Ms. Young here. It's Ms. Brohmack's here.
Good evening. My name is Clara Brohmack and I am the, well, not a parent, grandparent and great pet, grandparent of children that attend Rochester City School, Rochester City Schools. And I'm here with the delegation from CAFE. And one of the things that our CAFE meeting that was discussed is that, and they're trying to encourage parent involvement, active involvement. And at one of the meetings, we were told that parents would have, I'm talking about the code of, the code of conduct, that parents would have an active part in reviewing and having input into it. And I have the new seventy, 2007, 2008 calendar and the rules are already in there. So I guess I'm, I've, I missed the train again, but as a grandparent, I would like to have my input. Most of the rules and regulations seem ordinary. What I don't see here is what happens when a child comes not just appropriately? What happens? Are the parents notified? Is the child just, is the school door opened up and the child just said, go home and change clothes? There's no order in what parents must do, what the child must do, and what the staff must do. Some of the things here, especially the violence, I have a grandson that is going to be a senior this year, and throughout his high school grades, there was always someone fighting, there was always someone arguing. And nine out of 10 times, if he got into an argument, if he was suspended, you know, first thing I'm going to know is what happened? And he's, Grandma, it wasn't me, the boy jumped on me, the boy took my pencil, the boy took my, or they said something about me and I retaliated. I corrected it by merely saying, I'm sending you to get an education. I'm not asking him to back down, but I'm asking him to find alternatives. But there are some children that aren't looking for alternatives. And what recourse in these code of conducts do us parents have, or grandparents have? There's always the option of having a teacher or a personnel from, from school call, but that's not always an option. I'm involved in the community, so there are times when I'm not glued to my phone. There are times when I need to get a message to my child. And whenever I call, it depends on who I'm talking to, where we can't take the message to him, or he can't come to the phone, there's always an obstacle until I say, must I come to the school? And you know, then you get a change of mindset. The other things is that if this is supposed to be involved-
Yeah, your three minutes, Ros, would you please conclude?
If it's supposed to be parent involvement and you want parents' input, there needed to be an appropriate time for us to do that. And I'm, like everything else, we want parent involvement, but we don't know how to get it. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person is Mildred Edie and Rosemary Rivera.
Can I say everybody doing?
All right.
My name is Mildred Edie. And by the grace of God, I have helped to raise three generations. I lived through the time when racism was in your face and violent. Today I live in a very confused met time when we say that racism is being eliminated. Yet our institution wait until the year 2007 to decide to create African American Studies Department. It is long overdue. My only hope is that it will be done right in a way that will include parents and even grandparents. For as long as our children has been exposed to leaders, our nation that they cannot relate to, I am hoping that by giving them leaders that they can relate to, not only in the books, but in the teachers. That perhaps we can keep your children in school and off the streets. Let's look at the fact that we need more African American role models teaching our children. We need to make sure that teachers are trained to deal with our culture, no matter what race they are. The fact is that most of the children in this district, they are black. So what works for one culture doesn't always work for another. I hope this department, let me say this again, I hope this department will keep that in mind and God bless them in taking this fresh step because we have miles to go before we sleep. God bless you.
Miss, miss, hold on a second, please. Rosemary Rivera. Tiffany Young.
As a student at Franklin High School, I want to say yes in favor of African African American Studies Department and yes to a public process to choose our next superintendent. There is so much content missing regarding the history of my ancestors and their contribution that it's misshapes our understanding of who we really are and what we are capable of being. Our schools are in crisis and we, we need urgent attention to the problems.
Kathleen Fisher. Next speaker would be Kathleen Cleanda Florence.
Good evening, my name is Kathleen Benedetti Fisher. I'm a former city school student and an experienced secondary school teacher. While the 39% graduation rate clarifies that our district is in crisis, we all would have different opinions about which part of the team is more to blame, leadership, administration, faculty, parents, and the students themselves. But part of our crisis is inherited, an inequitable system which renders all parts of the team ineffective despite exhaustive effort. We must take responsibility to inherit ourselves. How? Our district has a rare opportunity. We have a well-informed, committed group of professionals, parents, teachers, community members, and students, asking the district to examine what race and inherited racism has to do with our crisis. Their proposal, an African African American Affairs Department. If the district is committed to equity, it cannot be afraid of strengthening supports to minorities. Beyond more multicultural curriculum, a department of experienced professional advocates for racial equity that reaches and has power across the district. This would be a beacon of light to uninspired students and to well-intentioned, committed, hard-working, but sometimes ineffective faculty and administration. An African American Affairs Department could be a bridge for reticent parents, a source of support for students, teachers, and administration, an educational resource and an information hub for students, teachers, and administration. An African African American Affairs Department could be a visible commitment to equity that would invite deeper investment. It would be a visible means of strengthening the district's conscience, and it could be a training resource that would broaden awareness of how to be a racial ally. More than a multicultural workshop is needed if the district truly intends to model shared power and empowerment. An example of shared power is the only example that will inspire students to believe the educational system is truly there to serve them. Thank you.
Following Ms. Florence would be Myra Brown.
Jumbo, which means hello in Swahili. I imagine that a good number of you on the board or in the audience did not know what that meant. It is imperative that the children in the Rochester City School District have a quality educational foundation of the richness of African peoples, their culture, and contributions. For over 40 years, this district has been feeding our children a watered-down curriculum that does not challenge them to become critical and analytical thinkers. African American Studies is not only for students, but the staff in the district. Teachers and other professionals in the district must better equip themselves in order to be effective in urban education. The time has run out on our watches and our children's watches while you play political chess and using our children as pawns. We are calling checkmates. People feared Martin Luther King Jr. because he taught people how to be dreamers. They feared Malcolm X because he taught people to be thinkers, ask questions, and to take a stand by any means necessary. They feared Marcus Garvey because he wanted our people to go right back to being the kings and queens that we are. No longer will we sit back idly, allowing the district to produce a pedagogy that oppresses children, parents, and the community. We are demanding a change. We are holding you accountable because without you, there will be, without us, there will be no you. As the famous writer, rapper, and actor Tupac Shakur has stated, no matter how much concrete you may try to lay in our way of our children and their parents for selfish political gain, a rose will grow through the concrete either with or without your support. A famous Ki Swahili proverb states, haba nah haba, kubaja kibaba, meaning little by little, you feel the measure of the mind. This is the goal for our children, not the pipeline to prison, not a transparent education, not unqualified teachers and administrators, not high dropout rates, not high teen pregnancy rates. We are no longer knocking on the door politely asking you for a change. We are kicking it in and demanding what is needed for, to reclaim our children, our precious pearls. Thank you.
Following Ms. Brown would be Howard Igor.
Hi, my name is Myra Brown, and as one of the organizational heads of an organization called ARM, which Rochester's anti-racism movement that's committed to dismantling systemic and institutionalized racism in all of its forms, we believe that what is really needed is an African African Americans Affairs Department. We support this African African Americans curriculum, but we believe that it should sit under an affairs department, which would look at addressing the broader scope of institutionalized racism that continues to impact our parents, our educators, and our children, their sense of self, their sense of self-worth, and their sense of accomplishment. It is ARM's hope that this African African American Studies Department, when it rolls out, that it will become clear that it cannot stand alone to address the more systemic issues of race and racism evidenced by devaluation, distortion, the misuse of economic and institutional power, defined cultural norms, authorization of our children, internalized racial superiority and oppression. ARM would like to commend Commissioner White and the members of this board for bringing forth a long-overdue aspect of our education. Scientists have helped us to know that the human origin began in Africa. And so when we talk about African and African American Studies, we're talking about our collective human history. We should not be afraid or ashamed to lift up the place and the story of our human birth. I'm excited about its materializing, and ARM looks forward to being part of, being involved in its rolling out of this process. And we thank you so very much for it being on the agenda tonight.
Following Mr. Igor would be Lori Thomas.
Good evening. I'm listed on the sheet as a staff person. I guess I can't get away from that label, but I'm speaking as a member of ARM this evening. We'd like to publicly thank Commissioner White for introducing a version of the Africa, the original concept of a department of African and African American affairs. We think that, we support his resolution. We think that it represents a positive and important step in the right direction, and we look forward to continuing to work with Commissioner White and others who are involved in this effort. We think that it's critical to continue to create opportunities for parents and community to have input into the process as it unfolds. Also, we want to thank Dr. Kala publicly for the, for the outstanding, courageous, bold, committed leadership that he's been displaying. And we were sorry, we regret hearing that apparently you're not interested in the permanent superintendent's position, but then we're encouraged by the fact that apparently whomever the permanent person is, that person will see, receive his or her orientation under Dr. Kala's guidance. And so that's still good. And we do want to express that we are not necessarily in agreement with those who have been saying that one candidate in particular, in terms of the finalists, does not have the right kind of experience to lead this district. Based on our extensive research and information, we're convinced that perhaps this person has exactly the right kind of experience, the right kind of knowledge, the right kind of commitment to continue the high standard that Dr. Kala has clearly set in terms of leadership in this community. And so we look for, and we thank the board, at least the majority of the board, hopefully all of the board, for creating the opportunity for us to engage the finalists in discussion. We really, that's very, very important. And so we also look forward to being a part of that process. Thank you. I have a written statement that I'd like to submit to be introduced into the record of this evening's meeting. Thank you.
Ms. Thomas?
Good evening. I went on the website because I called in to see what was on the agenda tonight, to speak to it. And I was told that the Code of Ethics was on the agenda, and I read the Code of Ethics, Policies 2160, School District Officer and Employee Code of Ethics. Officers and employees of the Rochester City School District shall hold their positions to serve and benefit the public and not for personal gain or advantage. The Board of Education recognizes that in order to implement this fundamental principle, there is a need for a clear and reasonable standards of ethical conduct. This code of conduct establishes such standards by defining and prohibiting acts of incompatible that are incompatible with public interest. It was said that the board was impressed by candidate Purcell's record on improving attendance, narrowing achievement gap between black and white students, and overseeing a facilities modernization plan. However, these qualifications did not meet one of the top 10 items produced by the survey offered to the community by the district for which we paid handsomely. In fact, increasing attendance never made the list. Reducing the achievement gap was 18th on the list, and experience with business financial management of complex organization was 24th on the list. The qualifications of Mr. Maines brings to the table are principal of a school with a population of approximately 600 students, city council member, and mayoral candidate. Unfortunately, not one of these qualifications made the list either. While I hold no malice toward either candidates, I do believe that after $160,000 and many months conducting a nationwide search for candidates, there had to have been at least one individual more qualified or one that met at least one of the top 10 criterion generated by the community survey. I would think that a qualified search firm utilizing $160,000 of taxpayer monies could produce a list of candidates that came close to matching at the very least half of the top 10 qualities an ideal superintendent as defined by the surveys completed by members of this community. While I understand that the qualifications ranked in the survey provided to the community by the search firm as part of the $160,000 they were paid should not be the only criteria by which to choose a superintendent. I would hope that the Board of Education, after paying $160,000 to a search firm to compile a list of qualified candidates, would at least consider the survey results as part of their determination as to whom would be best qualified to be this district's next superintendent. I feel it necessary to ask Commissioner Evans, excuse me, Evans, Chair of the Superintendent Search Committee, if the information gathered by the survey was even considered by the search firm as a guide in the selection process. If not, then why did we pay the search firm $160,000 since part of contract price was to create, conduct, compile the findings of, from a community survey?
You please conclude, Ms. Thomas?
I will.
Thank you.
Shouldn't the contract be amended and the price reduced for failure to utilize aspects gathered by the survey as part of the determination process? Given the board, given the history of board decisions concerning choice of superintendent, it may be prudent for the search committee and the board to enlist the aid of Rochester's citizens in their selection process. We are an intelligent, informed, and integral part of this community. Don't shut us out. Embrace our willingness to be involved. Thank you.
We'll move on with the superintendent's report. Dr. Kala?
The, I want to talk about the Oren T. Shapiro Award. This award established 20 years ago is given each year by Sanford Shapiro in memory of his son. The award inspires teachers to engage 11th and 12th grade students in the writing of creative and expository pieces. Entries are turned in to the Director of English and a panel of district English teachers serve as judges to narrow the entries to four finalists in each category. These eight pieces are then sent to Mr. Shapiro, who has a panel of his own judges review the entries to select one winner in each category. The winning students each receive a check for $1,000 and each of their teachers receives a check for $500. The students cannot attend this evening, but their teachers will accept the awards on their behalf. And to introduce the names of the teachers, or of the students and the teachers, I'd like to introduce Connie Leach to come forward. Secondary Director of ELA, thank you.
Good evening, everyone, and thanks for this opportunity to acknowledge students who not only won the award, but who wrote entries for the award. We have many students out there who gave their very best for this award, and as Dr. Kala said, this is the 19th Annual Oren T. Shapiro Award. It's in memorial of Sanford Shapiro's son, and he has given this award to our district only as a memorial to his son, and we are very, very honored that he has done so. only as a memorial to his son, and we are very, very honored that he has done so. We're going on 20 years. We have two student winners. We did contact them. I'm not sure they're here this evening. The winner of the creative writing piece was Julia Peruccio. Is she here tonight? She thought she might be able to attend. Julia?
Students, students aren't here. I don't think the students are here.
Okay, I did call, okay. And the, and her teacher was Marcy Gamzin. And for the expository writing piece, it was Emily Cornish. And representing Soto, both students were from School of the Arts, is Mr. Brad Craddock, who will take these plaques back to Soto with him. Thank you.
Thanks, Connie. I've been appointed to the Governor Spitzer's Children's Cabinet, the Advisory Board, and it's, I'm flattered with the honor. It's a lot of work. I spent the day there yesterday. And there are two major focal points of the Advisory Cabinet. And it's a cabinet that is made up of about 35 individuals from across the state. It's chaired by Jeffrey Canada from the Harlem Children's Zone. And those two focal points are making sure that we get kids enrolled in pre-K and that all children have health care. So I am, I consider myself the pre-K poster child, someone who is going to make sure that we get as many kids into pre-K as we possibly can. So this is a very appropriate group for us. So I am working very diligently with members of our own community, with a subgroup of the Educational Leadership Council, which is a group put together by the mayor. And we are working to get, in the next couple of weeks, about 70 additional children into pre-K who are not enrolled in pre-K. There are two major obstacles with getting kids into pre-K, and that's transportation and childcare. And in the Children's Cabinet, we're working on trying to solve those problems by getting transportation aid for the transportation and get the appropriate legislation that handles that, and also working to get all of the health care programs in the state available. As many people know, that the, that has, all of the health care programs for children have been expanded in this budget, and it's going to be a chore to get people aware of what the, what these programs are and that we make sure that we get them involved. And the childcare, childcare is critical to parents in order to get their kids involved in pre-K because pre-K is a half day, and they need the childcare for the other half day. One other issue that I'd like to at least bring to the board's attention is that New York State School Boards Association is looking for input for No Child Left Behind. It's national reauthorization, and it would seem appropriate that a school district as large as Rochester should, should make their voices heard so that the legislation, when reauthorized, reflects our needs and not the needs of some other area. You received these little green booklets, and they have sample letters in here, and it would be good if we, as a board, make a united front and, and put our opinion forward so that the legislation is reauthorized in a way that works for our children. The last point is, I think it was, I'm not sure if it was last board meeting, but perhaps two board meetings ago, we were to have a presentation by the Native American Resource Center. But I, we, are we, Perry, are we in business this time?
We are.
Okay. The Native American Resource Center, in operation since 1974, provides an after-school program for Native American students in grades K through 12. This program provides instruction in the cultural heritage, including arts and crafts, and is also, it contains a strong parent involvement component. I'd like to introduce Perry, Perry Ground, who's the project coordinator for the Native American Resource Center, and I think he has a very pleasing presentation for you.
I hope so. Thank you, Dr. Kala. I'll invite the members of the board, Dr. Kala, maybe to come down front because we do have a PowerPoint presentation. And I'll ask the clerk, please, to lower the screen. Okay, we're off to a rousing start already, so. Again, I'd like to thank President Garcia, members of the board, Dr. Kala, for inviting us back again to make this presentation. I do apologize again about our technical difficulties. Two months ago it was, actually, but I'm glad that we're able to come back and share this information with you. The Native American Resource Center, as Dr. Kala mentioned, has been part of the Rochester City School District for more than 30 years, and we do teach Native American students and non-Native American students about the importance of the history, culture, and contributions made by Native American people throughout history. This past year, our students were able to participate in a very exciting and once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to attend a program called the Virtual Museum Workshop that was offered by the National Museum of the American Indian, which is part of the Smithsonian Institute. As I learned in college, always tell people what we're going to talk about. So this is what we're going to talk about tonight. What is the Resource Center? What is the Virtual Museums Workshop? We'll see some examples of students' work and then some future projects that we are doing to build off of what we learned this year down at the Smithsonian. I do have two students with me tonight that I'll introduce. Chandra Martinez, who is working our computer right now, is about to be a 7th grader at Wilson Academy. And Paula Plaza, who is standing to my left, will be an 8th grader at John Marshall High School later this year. Next slide. Don't forget the pictures. Okay. I did mention these three points two months ago while we were trying to stall for time and fix our technical issues. But our mission at the Resource Center is threefold. We want to provide standards-based cultural education and enrichment for our Native American students who attend schools here in the Rochester area. We know that there are more than 200 Native American students attending schools in the Rochester district right now, and we provide services to them to teach them about who they are as Native American people. Through our weekly classes and by using our community resources, we bring in guest speakers and design projects in a curriculum that helps to support what they are doing in their everyday classrooms, as well as teach them about their own cultural heritage. The second part of our mission is to support them in their academic efforts. Everything that we are doing is pointing them towards going to college when they complete their studies here in Rochester. When I started in this program five years ago, and I asked all of our students how many of them planned on going to college, not one of them raised their hand. And now, our students, if we were to ask them the same question, all of them would raise their hand. We do maintain extensive college and scholarship files to help all of our students plan for their secondary or post-secondary education. The other thing that has been most successful for us is to act as a resource for non-Native students and educators throughout the district. We have three different outreach programs. We provide more than 150 programs each year, serving at least 3,000 students annually to teach them about the history and culture of Native American people. We work predominantly with 4th and 5th graders, helping them to prepare for the 5th grade state assessment in social studies. But in this coming year and in future years, my supervisor and I have developed some plans to also make sure that we help the 7th and 8th graders, because currently the 8th grade students are not passing their social studies assessment anywhere near levels that we would want them to be passing at. We know that through some of our efforts, we've helped to raise the achievement level on the 5th grade social studies test. We hope to repeat that with the 8th graders. Also, we do hope to very soon be part of the Destiny Library System so that every single student and educator in the district will be able to utilize the resources that we hold at the Native American Resource Center located within School Number 19, and that we would send those materials around the district so that other students and educators could use them in their classrooms. Next slide. So what is the Virtual Museum Workshop? Again, as I mentioned, it's offered by the Smithsonian through the National Museum of the American Indian. This is the final Smithsonian Institute built on the Mall. It is, in fact, the closest museum to the Capitol Building, and they also have a facility in New York City. The goal of the program is to get students interacting with the museum collection and learning how to use digital technology to record and preserve information about their cultural heritage by having a tangible connection to this collection. Our students were able to see items made by their ancestors. In some cases, it was a direct connection. I saw items that were made by my great uncle. He's a painter named Ernie Smith. He has many items here in the Rochester Museum and Science Center, and I was able to see over 30 paintings that no one in my family has seen for more than 40 years. I was the first member of my family to be able to touch them again since he painted them, and they were purchased by the museum. Some of our students were able to see materials made by members of their tribe, and there are some examples here that we see in the, in the photographs. The students were taking digital photographs, as we see in the top picture, and what they were using was QuickTime Virtual Reality. So we're trying to blend together the idea of using modern technology to preserve something that is an important part of our cultural heritage by photographing and preserving images of these objects. Some of these objects have been in the collections for hundreds, over 100 years, and some of them are hundreds of years old and have not been seen or touched, except for when they were moved from New York City to just outside of Washington, D.C. just a few years ago. Many of them have never been exhibited or are unable to be exhibited because they are so fragile. So this will be the only place that people will be able to see them. In our outcome, which will be in a virtual exhibition featured on the website of the museum and hopefully here on the district website as well. Next slide. So the Virtual Museum Workshop, I learned about this program three years ago, attending the National Indian Education Association Conference. This is a conference that, through my position, I am somewhat required to go to each year, and we talk about the state of Native American education around the entire country. This program is very specifically for Native American students, although they are using it as a model for the new African-American museum, which will be part of the Smithsonian, and will be opening in the next few years. And some of the other museums that are part of that institute are taking this program and building, or building programs based on this model. We did apply a few times, and two years ago, it says last year, but it's really two years ago, our application was rejected, more because of finances than anything else. But our application last June was accepted. We were one of only two schools in the entire country accepted for this previous year's program. And again, there's an example of some of the work that we were able to see. And again, why participate? And this is actually Chandra, who is holding this box in the photograph. This connected the students. They were able to touch, handle, and experience the objects that are in the Smithsonian's collection. We were in the back rooms that most people are not allowed to go in, and except for this program, no one under the age of 18 is allowed to visit the collection areas that we visited. So for us to be able to handle these objects, to be able to photograph them, like we see in the lower picture, a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. We do hope to introduce them to how to use the technology, as I said, for positive outcomes and hopefully introduce some career choices to them. Next slide. I'll let Paula talk just a little bit about some of our preparation for going to this program.
During the preparation, we had to take two, during the preparation, we had to take two tests, and we took them more than one time. If you did not pass the first time, we took one on safe handling the objects as actual touching objects we have in our own classroom and holding them so we didn't break them. And the other test was about respecting the object. And we had to fill out object surveys during this, and we had to pick out of, I think, I'm going to go with five. In the surveys, we had to choose a theme. Mine was jewelry. And we had to pick 500, out of 500, we had to pick 20 items that went with our theme. And then we ended up narrowing it down to seven.
Yes, these students had to come to our class each week. There was a two-hour class, and throughout the school year leading up to our trip in April, they did have to learn about how to use digital cameras. They had to learn about QuickTime Virtual Reality, and as much as they hated it, I taught them how to be a museum worker, to collect data about an object, how to record data about an object, how to safely handle the objects, how to move the objects, and items that I knew that they would need once we got to Washington. A compliment to what we did, or that we received because of what we did, there were at least six members of the NMAI staff, that's the shorthand for National Museum of the American Indian. The NMAI staff commented that our students were better prepared to handle the museum objects than anyone that had been in the museum before, whether they were students who participated or they were professional researchers who were coming in to use the collection. So our students were very well prepared. Also, the Director of the program took copies of all of the pages that I use, such as the planning, object surveys and our planning pages, and he is going to incorporate those so all students in the future will use the model that I created for our students to use so that they will be better prepared. Also, and we'll see this in a future slide, we completed more work while we were in Washington than any other group that had participated in this program before by at least 50%. We took photographs of 46 objects. The most prior to us was 30 objects over the five days. We did visit one of our local collections, and the staff at the Rochester Museum and Science Center did a fantastic job helping to prepare our students. And as Paula mentioned, we did receive photographs of over 5,000 objects that the students had to filter through, often on their own time. We had discs that we sent them home or to school with, and they had to look through each photograph to decide which ones they would want to work with when we arrived in Washington, D.C. And then the planning pages, again, that was for the research collecting information such as the object number, the artist, the tribe that it came from, the date that it was collected or made, and a number of other pieces of information. Next slide, please. Actually, I'm going to ask Chandra to come up and talk about our trip to Washington. Paula will take over there.
We went to the, we went to Washington, D.C. over, we went to Washington, D.C. over spring break, and we had to work at the Culture Center in 9 through 325.
Were you in a regular school day?
We had to ride in a Smithsonian shuttle with other employees of the museum. We photographed our selected objects that we chose off of the computer. We completed 46 objects, and we had to do research on each object and write essays about each one to perform our own voice for the pieces.
Yes, one of the things that was very interesting, one of the staff members of the museum encouraged the students, he told them, he said, "These objects can't speak for themselves. Beauty needs a voice for this object." So the research that they did and the information that they gathered and the text that they wrote will speak for these objects, many of which, as I stated before, will never be exhibited in the real world. It will only be exhibited virtually, well, exhibited here. Also, many of the students had never flown before. Five or six students got to experience an airplane for the first time, and there was much screaming and crying and gnashing of teeth and pulling of hair. But we, they were treated very much like employees. They were given ID badges that they had to wear all week, and we did have to ride the shuttle, sign in and sign out, same as an employee of Smithsonian would have to do during the course of their, of their work. We do have some examples of work. I'll ask Paula to come back up here, and I'll operate this here for them, and then you can tell a little bit about the work. And then you can tell a little bit about the work.
This is my page. And there's the essay on the one side, on the right side. And on the left side, there's a video using QuickTime, Flash, I mean Flash. And you can zoom in, you can zoom out, you can get really close. It's getting really close. And but what you guys may not notice, these were too old for me to touch, and they're in a plastic bag. And that's it.
Yes, you can tell that these are inside a plastic bag. Tell us what these are called.
Those are wampum beads. That before they were, it was, they were used before silver and glass beads.
And Paula will change the color.
This is my page. And this shows a picture of a very old skirt that was, that cannot be displayed because of how old it is. And if it's displayed, most of it will rot away. And if you zoom in more, you could find that the beads are kind of caying and breaking off. And the silk that's around it is also changing colors. And there's holes that bugs bit into for the skirt being so old.
The one thing about this program that we use, you can see how close we can zoom into this, it's a very high-resolution camera. This photograph was actually taken from about seven feet high. Chandra, I can send a step ladder on the tripod that we use, both standing above this object, used on a special device that they actually had to use while we were there, this slam port, as we make, which was a very large object. So this is another contribution that we make in the museum is that now they have this board for large objects. And now for this program, we'll try to make a contribution. And this is another contribution that we have made.
This is another object, but this is used QuickTime on a turntable. So you can get all three hundred and sixty degrees of the object. That we had to take thirty-six pictures, each of ten degrees. And you could also spin it around to see where it was latched together and all the different designs. And if, you could also zoom in here to see what was carved in and what was carved out of the metal.
This one's also using a QuickTime video, but instead of going three hundred and sixty degrees all the way around, mine only went one eighty because it wasn't able to stand up by itself and we had to make a little thing for it, a little prop, so it can stay on the turntable. And it can only go one hundred and eighty degrees, but you can also zoom in and see the texture and the metal of the earring. And if it turns to the right side, you can also see the latches on the earring.
And Paula's theme of jewelry, all her objects, our jewelry, all of these were obviously used to make jewelry prior to silver and glass beads. And Chandra's theme was.
Yeah.
Some of these other objects that we see, like the hat, this is another one, there is a movie that they're called, that we turned in three hundred and sixty degrees. And some of the objects, as I mentioned, were so fragile that they had to have special boards created to support them, whether they were feathers or needles that were on the cloth. And we can tell some of the other.
We went to visit the Museum of Airplanes. And then we got to see the museum of where we got to see artifacts of dinosaurs and the, yeah, the natural history. And then, what else did we?
What did we see at the National Archives?
Oh, and then we went to see the National Archives. We saw the Declaration of Independence, the Bill of Rights, and the Constitution. Then, oh, and we went to the National Zoo. We saw pandas that are very rare to see in our country. And then we walked a lot.
Yes, the students loved how much we walked. If any of you have been to Washington, you know you walk a lot. Also, each of them got to ride the metro for the first time. None of them had ever been on a subway before. So they had many life experiences. Next slide, please. We do have to say thank you to a number of people that helped to make this project possible. There are many departments and staff members in various departments here in the district that went above and beyond their regular duties to help make sure that this project was a success for us, whether it was budget, or grants, or purchasing, or accounting. They made sure that the money was secured for us because all of the money for this project came from the Smithsonian. Not one dollar of local money was used for this program. Part of obtaining this grant or being selected for this program was that they paid for it entirely. In fact, they're very disappointed with me for not spending enough money. But I'm figuring out ways to spend more money, don't worry. And we'll get some more of their dollars in the coming years. You can see the people up here. Our supervisor, Director of Social Studies, Paul Lampy, was instrumental in making this happen. And also, I have to say thank you to the parents and the students because it was the parents who really encouraged their students to go with us. And the students gave up their spring break to go and work eight hours a day. Not only did they work while we were in the museum, each day, at the end of the day, we would have at least a two-hour planning meeting. And they had to tell me something that they had learned that day and something that they hoped to accomplish the next day. So they truly were employees of the museum for a one-week period. Next slide, please. We do have some plans to build off of this. The Rochester Museum and Science Center has already invited us to be part of this project that they are undertaking in this coming year. They are hoping to photograph at least two hundred objects in their collection, all made by Native Americans. Two weeks from now is my first meeting to get that set up, I believe. But the students that went with us to Washington and some other students will be working on this project with them. We do hope to make a book of our Native community members in 2009. And the students will be doing research on the families who live here in the Rochester area so that everyone can get to know who the Native people are around here. Presentations such as this, and there are a number of people that have already invited us, including NMAI in New York City, so some of these students will be having to go with me down to New York City. And maybe they'll get to ride the subway again when we go there. Okay? And you can see some of the other locations that have asked us to make presentations. And I do hope that this will lead to some museum internships for some of our students because many of them became very interested in doing this type of work, connecting their culture with their education. And that is one of my goals for this program. Next slide. Just wanted to say thank you. And this is our entire group that went with us, including the two students that are here with me tonight, and the two chaperones that went with us and gave up seven days of their lives to spend with us as well. And this is a picture from inside the museum. So thank you very much for having us here and giving us this opportunity to share this with us.
Thank you. And thank you for all the presenters. We are going to move on.
President Garcia, I have a couple of questions of the superintendent, if I may.
Yes, certainly.
Dr. Kell, I just want to congratulate you on your appointment to the Governor's Committee with respect to pre-K. One of the things I would hope, one of the issues that I hope that you would push for us is a full-day pre-K.
Absolutely.
Because that certainly is a huge issue for a number of our parents to, that will prevent them or tends to prevent our parents from enrolling their children in pre-K programs. We really need to have full day pre-K services. And of course, we know how successful the pre-K program has been. Another question I would have in reference to the Native American program, and I would just like to thank the presenters for the program, for the presentation. One question I have is, what's the graduation rate of our Native American students? Is that information available? What's last year's graduation rate? Or what's the average over thirty years that we've had this program, the graduation rate of our Native American students? And then lastly, and if that information is not available, if Dr. Kell, you can have your staff to provide that for me. And then lastly, you know, we know that Christopher Columbus did not discover America. And so my concern is, is that we have textbooks that truthfully reflect what our American history is. And I've talked about this in reference to the social studies textbooks with the smiling slaves that we just purchased, that the board approved. But I'm hoping that we're going to, since we spend an enormous amount of money on textbooks, that we as the district would influence this process by saying, unless you change it and make this, the history truthful, we're not buying your textbooks. So thank you.
Mr. Spahn?
President Garcia.
Fine. Commissioner Thompson?
I see the memo from Dr. Kell regarding resolutions. I had a question about that, unless we want to hold the question until we actually began voting on the resolutions.
I would rather hold the question until we start on the resolutions.
Okay, then the only thing I'd like to do is really give my thanks to Perry Ground and the students for that presentation. It was several months ago that I visited the Native American Resource Center and got a chance to see the students in action. And that kind of presentation, listening to what they did in preparation, what they did on the visit, the compliments that they received on their conduct and their work, really just makes us proud. And it's the kind of pride that we feel every time we have a chance to share amongst ourselves and with the community what our students do, whether it's the students who visited Louisiana and worked to rebuild homes and dwellings during their school break, or whether it's the students who win the state championship in football. We've got a lot to be proud of in Rochester. And the work that's being done in the Native American Resource Center is just the reason, one of the reasons why we're so determined to do the African and African-American Department here, because it's important for all of our students to understand their history, their culture, and how it fits into the larger scheme. So thank you very much for your work, Perry.
Fine, then we'll move on with the committee reports. And we'll start to my right with Commissioner Brennan.
The Policy Committee met on August fourteenth, and we conducted a hearing on the Code of Conduct and discussed the LED Safe Schools proposal, the attendance policy 5000, and the parent involvement policy 1900. Lynda, you've just received the texts of Resolutions 152 and 153, which deal with the cell phone policy and the code of ethics, which came up at the last meeting and which were inadvertently left out of the information you'd received earlier. Do you have them? Okay. And if there's any need to discuss them later, we can. The next Policy Committee meeting will be September thirteenth. The LED Safe Schools proposal represents collaboration among community groups, district administration, and the board. This proposal was forwarded in your Friday packet in anticipation of the Policy Committee approving it, which it did. It calls for staff training, facility testing, and regular reports to the board. And it's been described, I think accurately, as a groundbreaking, a nationally groundbreaking policy regarding LED remediation in public schools. LED remediation has been addressed in many other avenues, but not in schools to this degree, and we may be making history here. And I want to just thank the LED Coalition, Derek Hazel, Commissioner White, Commissioner Elliott, and Commissioner Powell in particular, and the district staff for the work they did sorting out this difficult issue. They really performed heroically, as far as I'm concerned. And we asked that this proposal be discussed under new business and voted on in September. We have also referred to the Policy Committee and referred this to the Policy Committee and the Intergovernmental Relations Committee as it pertains to facilities modernization as well. Discussion will continue on amendments to the proposed attendance policy. Chief among these is extending the policy to include elementary schools, grades one through six, and adding excessive tardiness. That's something that needs to be addressed. We've asked the superintendent to review the administrative regulations that occupy the policy, and we'll discuss this issue at our September meeting as well. We are also looking into, and this is long overdue, the parent involvement policy 1900, and have asked the superintendent to provide a status report on site-based planning teams for our October meeting. And I think in plain English, this is often translated into the question that's been asked from this dais and in the audience. What is so difficult about conducting elections of parent representatives in processes where that's required? And we have been dealing with that year in and year out, and it hasn't been addressed. And I, for one, will be awaiting progress on that very anxiously. We had several speakers discuss the Code of Conduct. We had some speakers address that tonight as well. And although timing requires this policy be voted on tonight, I want to make it clear that policy may be recommending amendments at a later date regarding input from the public hearing. And I would just point out that we had the discussion at the last meeting, and I hope we continue to have the discussion, about the appropriateness, or about the what is, what constitutes proper and timely parental input and public input in addressing this. There's no reason why this can't be done earlier, as far as I'm concerned, in the amendment process, and the Policy Committee will be addressing it. And I believe that's it. The next meeting is September thirteenth. The public is most welcome to attend and, to a reasonable extent, participate. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Elliott?
President Garcia, we continued talking about committee, board committee, reconfiguration in reference to, you know, some of the committees that are standing now, should they continue? Should we add more committees? And we also discussed staff evaluation and also the annual evaluation tool of the superintendent. We are looking at scheduling a retreat sometime in the near future to discuss these items. And I would just point out and bring to your attention for the audience as well, I believe I could trust that in the calendar, the business meetings will now be scheduled for the fourth Thursday of the month. And so please take note of that on your calendars at the meetings now. Reason for that is that it gives the district staff, hopefully sufficient time to respond to us as board members to questions that we may have. Now, that's not to say that all of those questions are going to be answered outside of the public view, I don't believe. And I believe in some of the questions that I have to be answered in a public forum. But that certainly will give us enough time for some of the questions that take longer to respond to to be answered. And our next meeting is August twenty-eighth.
Thank you. Commissioner Evans?
The Community and Government Relations Committee is
The Community and Government Relations Committee is tentatively scheduled to meet Monday, August 27th.
Commissioner Powell?
Thank you. The Finance Committee met on August 14th, and again, this evening before the business meeting began. There's a significant number of amendments, or resolutions, rather. Resolutions 97 through 107 have to do with facilities. Resolutions 108 and 109 are budget finance. They involve the amendment of last year's, the final amendment to last year's budget and reflect an increase in grant income that was appropriately spent. Resolutions 110 through 113 are procurement and supply. Resolution 114 is an information technology resolution. And resolutions 115 through 147 include a variety of other expenditures, I believe including gifts. So, we had to reconvene tonight to address Resolution 117. We had concerns over the nature of the lease. Those concerns were resolved. We also learned that Resolution 120 was presented to us last week in error, and I move at this time that we pull Resolution 120 from the packet and do not consider it for a vote. What happened is in past years, the ABC daycare that was run out of Hart Street was utilizing facilities that the district was renting from its, from its primary landlord, and we were subletting it. They presented this, the administration presented us a renewal of that lease agreement, failing to recognize that the new lease that was negotiated turned that space over to the landlord, so ABC will be renting directly from the landlord and not from us. So, we shouldn't be taking action on that, and I move that we pull Resolution 120.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Question, President Garcia? Does that mean that Resolution 149 is also removed, since they're the same?
We have 120, 149, 123, and 124 have been pulled.
So, you're saying that the Resolution 120 is not the same as Resolution 149?
It is not the same one.
Okay.
But it's been pulled anyway.
It was the same one.
The memo from Dr. Kallar explains that it's been pulled because it was a duplicate.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
We also need to move the June financial reports. I move that the board accept the June financial reports. You've all seen them in your board.
We need a second for that.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it.
Thank you. I believe that concludes my report. Ordinarily, we would meet September 11th. I think I made it, I think I created a conflict in terms of scheduling, so we may have, we may or may not meet June, September 11th. Also, in my post as the Chair of the Big Five, I want to encourage every member of this board to join us in, at the NISBA, New York State School Boards Association Conference in New York City in October. There will be a full day devoted to the Big Five, and if you were able to attend, that would be very helpful. We're scheduling an opportunity to talk directly with members of the Regents, and also an opportunity to talk to people in Department of Ed, Johanna.
Duncan Potier.
Duncan Potier, thank you. Or, or one of her direct reports to talk to us about Big Five-specific issues. So, that concludes that report as well.
Yeah, we're taking that up on the new business.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Thompson?
The Quality Assurance Committee met on August 13th. We received a presentation on Black English vernacular, also known as Ebonics. This is not something that is taught in district schools, and it is not used by all African-American students. When appropriate, staff use BEV, or the students' home language, as a compare and contrast tool that helps students develop skill in the use of standard English. One point that was emphasized was the need for teachers to be able to skillfully work with students who present with strong Ebonics. These culturally competent, excuse me, these culturally competent instructors are often better able to keep students constructively engaged rather than having the opposite effect, possibly causing students to pull away from school. Dr. Sianka and Ms. Holloway recommended that Quality Assurance members review the research on the Haberman Educational Foundation interview process in order to inform any input we might offer the administration as it relates to the hiring of culturally competent staff. We also heard an update on the African and African-American Studies Department. If all goes as planned, a director may be in place by mid-September. We discussed with the administration that there should be a balance between adequate planning time and keeping this initiative moving. The amendment to Policy 4350, Multicultural Education, will be subject to board approval tonight, and will establish the African and African-American Studies Department. QA asked Human Resources for an update on staffing for 2007-08, specifically new hires by race and gender. We received figures for teachers only, which was an inadequate response to the information request. To date, from the information we received, 78 new teachers have been hired. Of these, 19 are African-American, 15 are Hispanic, and 43 are Caucasian. We're expecting hiring data for all staff at our next meeting in September, and we have been informed that a full report will also be provided to the board in October. Before I conclude my remarks, I'd like to, on behalf of the Quality Assurance Committee, publicly thank Dr. Marie Sianka for the support she's provided to the Quality Assurance Committee and wish her well in her new endeavors. And we will meet next on Monday, September 10th at 6:00 p.m. Our agenda includes information on suspension and attention data for the 2006-07 school year and diagnostic reading, or DRA results, for grades 3 through 6. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you. Commissioner White?
Audit Committee will meet on August 29th. We expect to discuss the Lead Safe Schools policy. From a risk management standpoint, we will also discuss the role of the claims auditor and the relationship of that office to the board. That concludes the Audit Committee's report. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. And then, we move on to the consideration of resolutions. The first resolutions will be 64 through 96. Those are Human Resources resolution. I'll entertain a motion to approve those, please.
Mr. President?
It's been properly seconded.
No, it was just moved.
Moved. Who moved?
I moved.
Oh, Tom Brennan moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner White?
Thank you, Mr. President. I submitted questions in a timely manner, thanks to Commissioner Powell reminding me that I need to do that. And again, I want to thank district staff for providing timely answers. I had a question relating to Resolution Number 65, and they did provide an answer, but it's with respect to the Young Mothers Program. The question was, has the Young Mothers Program been evaluated? The answer to my question, I don't know if my colleagues have the answers to the questions that I received, but it says, "No, it has not been evaluated." And my question to the, Mr. President, I'd ask that the superintendent addresses, when will that program be evaluated?
Commissioner, Dr. Kallar?
Sounds like very soon.
Thank you. I have another question, but I'll defer to you. This relates to Resolution Number 78, Mr. President. I had also submitted a question respecting that, reading teachers. And I asked the superintendent's staff, and the question was, if reading skills serve as a fundamental basis for learning, why have we eliminated one of the few remaining reading teachers that we have left in the district? This strikes me as inconsistent with what I know the superintendent believes is the fundamental building blocks. The following question asks, how many reading teachers do we now have? And I was told, three. I cannot imagine if we're having just three, this is a question, Mr. President, if we have just three remaining reading teachers, why we would downsize or eliminate the few teachers that we have that build the important building blocks for our students.
Dr. Kallar?
You know, I'm not prepared to answer that, to that question because of the depth that that involves, but I can give you a history, my history with that, of making sure that all teachers are reading teachers. That's incredibly important, that classroom teachers are reading teachers, and that we do teach reading. So, there are reading specialists and reading teachers. So, again, that's, that's a very superficial answer without, you know, knowing the history of the district and the history of the relationship of reading teachers to the classroom. So, that's something that I'm going to have to look into.
One teacher in specific mentioned once, there used to be 300 reading teachers in the district. If we're down to three, then something is going on there.
Yeah.
Mr. President, I would ask that we excise that particular resolution from this packet. Allow Dr. Kallup to provide us a comprehensive answer, and then maybe perhaps later on, vote on this.
Make that into a motion if there's a second and everybody agrees. There is a second. Any questions regarding? Commissioner Powell?
A procedural question. Are we tabling this until?
Yes. That's the motion.
The motion is to table which resolution?
Resolution Number 78.
Number 78, thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor of tabling that Resolution 78, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Me, I oppose.
President Garcia?
Yes.
I, let me just sort of state from the outset, and you've heard me state this before. The configuration of these resolutions and how we are voting on them in blocks, I take exception to, particularly when we have 71 pages of resolution. And I don't know what that amount is in terms of dollars and cents that we, as the board, have to be responsible for and do our due diligence. Having said that, in reference to Resolution 84, there are some of the requests I'm prepared to vote on, some I am not, don't want to vote on. And I'd ask this, I put this, and let me also say this, some of the resolutions that I will vote no on because of issues of integrity for me, we're asking to approve these resolutions when the work is already being done. And so I have a proper ethical problem with that, and an issue, for me, that's an issue of integrity, that the work would be done and after the fact, we're asking, or during that time, we're asking to approve this. And so I would ask you to bear with me as I go through some of this, because it is going to take time. Some of these I'm not supporting. How do we do that, President Garcia?
You're talking about Resolution 84. You just have to go yes or no on 84. We can't break down 84 here in public.
Well, we did it on some of the other resolutions in previous meetings.
No, we, we can, we can extract Resolution 84 and vote on it separately.
Okay.
We can do that, but you can't add vote on portions of 84. By the way, Dr. Kallar, as I understand from Resolution 84, that pertains a lot to the summer programs. I think that's what Commissioner Elliott is referring. And as you know, the summer program started, and obviously, we didn't know just the extent of the number of people who were going to be working on the summer program until we had the enrollment of the students. And it was based on the enrollment of the students that we agreed to hire the teachers. Therefore, that is why we're voting for teachers after the fact. The other option would have been for us not then to have that particular additional enrollment of students. But Dr. Kallar opened the enrollment process up to the last day and then beyond to make sure that as many students as possible benefited from the summer program. And I commend him for doing that, because in the past, we had a particular deadline. If students were not signed up by that deadline, they didn't get in. This time around, we had a record number of enrollees, and this, this is why this resolution is ordered in that way, Commissioner Elliott.
Yet there will be any number of resolutions that come after, of occurrences that happen after the previous board meeting but before the next board meeting. And in the case of summer activities, this is often the case. And as Commissioner Garcia mentioned, we extend, we were not happy with the amount of kids that got enrolled in summer school, so we wanted, did not want to keep that deadline, and we extended the deadline right up until actually the second day of summer school, after summer school began. Now, of course, there is an option for any of these. If one does not want to vote on these after the fact, you know, the other option is a special board meeting. And that, you know, that's where that happens.
Yeah, but I don't think it's necessary, considering that everyone, everyone here knows, and now Commissioner Elliott knows, why this resolution is stated as such.
Well, let me give an example. On page 23 of Resolution 84, specific dates to be worked is July 5th. Well, that certainly could have come at the last board meeting, so why is it at the August board meeting? So, those are the kinds of.
It's the date that they start, but it's not necessarily the date that they're hired.
Okay, that's why we need a personnel committee, so I can have this question answered. Well, I'll vote no on this one, because it's just too convoluted. I have issues, ethical issues with that.
Commissioner.
And it's just too law.
Commissioner Powell?
I just want to commend Dr. Kallar on making a decision that clearly put the children first. If it puts us in a position where people are being authorized to work by the board after they've already done the work, I think that we've put our priorities right by putting the kids first.
Well, one of the things I guess I would say is that we have a due diligence as this board to manage 600, almost $700 million as efficiently as we can. And I understand the value and the importance of putting children first. I love children myself, so that's not the issue per se. As much as it is, we have a financial responsibility to also make sure that what we're doing is ethical.
Commissioner.
That's all I'm saying.
Commissioner Powell?
And I would respond by saying that we managed that responsibility when we passed a budget that included sufficient funds for summer, summer school instruction.
Thank you. Now, there's been.
I have questions.
You have a question?
Yes, I do, thank you. For Resolution Number 81, we are approving retirements of individuals. However, one of the individuals is listed as leave, and I'm not sure how that jibes with a retirement. That's on a.
Page 11?
Which one?
Which one is it?
Page 11.
I'm trying to see in the new book. It's Resolution Number 81. It's the second individual is listed as, the third individual under education of children with disabilities is listed as on leave. Is the person on leave, are they retiring?
I can answer that, I just.
Dr. Kallar?
I know the answer to that. That particular individual has been on leave prior to retirement as opposed to being assigned to a specific school. So, he is retiring, but he's retiring from a leave rather than directly from a school assignment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I apologize that I didn't get my questions in in a timely way, but I don't think they're that lengthy. Resolution Number 84, I believe it's page 17 perhaps in the new book.
I think it's 13, but.
No, it begins on 13, but the question has to do with the portion of that resolution that's on page 17. The all-ous bullying prevention training, we have trainers that are attending the Glisten training. I'd like to request that we have the name and the number of sites that these trainers are working with, and would appreciate finding out what the expansion plans are for the training across the district.
You, Dr. Kallar can submit that information later.
Oh, certainly.
Okay, fine.
Certainly. And then further along.
Commissioner Thompson?
Just repeat your request so that I make sure I get that.
Yes, we have. Yes. We have trainers that are going to attend, we have all-uss bullying prevention trainers attending Glisten training. And those trainers are already working with the number of sites across the district. I'd like to know the names of those sites, the number of sites, and I'd also like to know what the expansion plans are for training across the district to other buildings, other sites.
Thank you.
Certainly.
The resolution that we tabled was 65, is that correct?
And I'm not finished.
84?
Oh, you have one?
I have another question, yes. Further along on page 19, we have the pilot training for integration of schools with mental health. We have several schools, staff members from several schools, that will be taking that training to put that pilot program in place. I'm just not sure why we would have eight staff people from Shalott, one staff person from East, five people from Monroe, two from, three from school number two. If this is training to launch a pilot program, there's such a wide range of staff people from different buildings. I'm wondering if there's a reason for that. Is that question clear?
It's clear.
Okay.
Dr. Kala will provide a response.
And I think finally, on page 29, the promoting alternative thinking for students. It's an in-service training for elementary and secondary special ed teachers. I apologize if we've received information on that program, and if we haven't, I would appreciate finding out what it is, the alternative, promoting alternative thinking for students. That's the last of my question for this portion of resolutions.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yes, President Garcia. The salaries that we pay summer staff, is that separate from the annual salary? Meaning, do our teachers and those staff that support students and who work in the summer, are they paid on a nine-month basis, or are they paid on a yearly basis? And this is additional income that they're receiving?
Dr. Kala?
It depends on which bargaining unit they're in. Some are paid on a percentage of their salary, either a 1/300 or a 1/250. Some are paid at an hourly rate. It's all contractual.
And then in reference to, oh boy, there was one question I had about what the CTE program is. So, Dr. Kala, if you can provide that information.
Commissioner White.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a point of information, I believe you might have misspoken, but I want to make sure where the record is clear. It is resolution number 78 that is being tabled, not 65?
78. I just, I didn't write the number down.
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you. Okay, I guess we're now ready to vote. We are voting for resolutions 64 through 77, and 79 through 96. Okay? All of those in favor? Well, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna take a roll call for my own reasoning. Commissioner Brennan?
Yes?
Commissioner Elliott?
Resolutions 64 through 72, no. Doesn't have anything to do with the quality of the person. I just have a problem with the salaries that we're paying. Resolution 73, yes. Resolution 74, yes. Resolution 75, yes. Resolution 76 and 77, resolution 76, yes. Resolution 77, in reference to one person under the secondary academic mathematics, I'm not in favor of us paying this salary for halftime.
Yes or no, Commissioner Elliott?
So, you're saying for me to vote no on the whole resolution?
Well, no. I'm saying, if you agree with 77, yes. If you don't agree, just vote no.
Well, there's, I agree in the majority, but part of this I don't agree with.
Well, then vote no.
78, 79 through 82, yes. 83, yes. 84, no.
Thank you. Do you still got?
Yeah, I still have a few more. 80, I guess 85 is... No. 87, no. 88 through, and 89, no. 93, 94 through 96, yes.
Commissioner Evans?
Yes.
Commissioner Power?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
And I vote yes for all of them except for resolution 84. I have to abstain because of a family member. I'll entertain a motion to approve resolutions 97 through 107.
Excuse me, I beg your...
It's been moved on second. Any questions?
Commissioner Garcia, I don't believe I voted on the last.
Commissioner Brennan, I didn't hear.
I, forgive me, I don't think I voted on the last item that we just, you...
Yeah, you said yes.
Yeah, you just said yes.
He went to you first.
You said yes.
Okay. All right.
Re-roll the tape. It was a long time ago, Tom.
It just got lost after.
I have days like that, Tom.
It's been moved on second. Any questions?
Gotcha. Okay.
Who's the second?
I seconded it.
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner Power, for identifying yourself. Any questions? No questions? All in favor?
Of course there are questions.
Well, then...
Are you kidding?
Okay.
In reference to resolution 97, I know there was discussion in the Finance Committee about the language of it being approximately as opposed to not to exceed. I guess, President Garcia, if I can refer to Commissioner Powell in reference to that language.
Yes, definitely. Commissioner Power, you might answer in that question.
Yes. The explanation for this is that in the past, we've contracted through a general contractor for this sort of service. And by doing that, we paid that contractor essentially a finder's fee, because he would simply subcontract it down. By contracting directly with a carpeting specialist, we're able to eliminate that markup. But we haven't, we haven't got a clear history of how much money we have spent on this type of purchase in the past. So, this is a ballpark.
Thank you. In reference to resolution 100, I'm concerned that this seems to be the ninth hour that we're bringing this resolution. Any explanation in terms of resolution 100?
This is the EPA?
That's correct.
Yeah. The situation there is that we had, we had a grant at our disposal. We're one of several government and community agencies that shared a piece of this grant. We tried to do some solutions earlier in the year that would reduce the emissions from our diesel trucks, but unlike trucks that are long-haul trucks that are running all the time, the usual solutions didn't work, because our engines didn't get hot enough. So, what this solution does is allows us to purchase essentially what amounts to catalytic converters for our diesel engines. This, it is at the very last hour, because the solution didn't really emerge until, till the grant period was nearly exhausted.
President Garcia?
That's it. Commissioner Thompson?
I just wanted to find out when we might expect to receive the little chart that will break out the, that will separate out the women versus people of color business employees. We were going to have that chart included in these type resolutions going forward, I thought.
Which one in particular?
Well, none of them have it broken out.
Oh.
Beginning with resolution number 97.
Jim, are you able to break that, break that out any further than you've broken that out?
I see that 110 we have...
I see there's a question mark on Jim's face, so...
Not sure he understands.
Are you understanding the question, Ms. Poney?
So, not all of them have it broken out. Only where there is a difference between women or person of color, will it be broken out?
Under the MWBE line, we put in, when it's a African-American, we put African-American, only for the, not the subcontractors. If there's a woman, we put woman. Now, you want to put woman, American, African-American?
No. So, for instance, number 97, resolution number 97, there's no breakout?
Because there's no...
There's no MWBE, sir.
So, there can't be.
Okay.
Right, okay.
That's why it says no all the way down. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Okay, all in favor of approving resolutions 97 through 107, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
97, I oppose.
Is that it? And I vote aye. The ayes have it. I'll entertain a motion to approve resolutions 108 and 109.
So moved.
Second.
It's properly due and moved on second. Are there any questions? All in favor of approving resolutions 108 and 109, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? I'll entertain a motion to approve resolutions 110 through 113.
So moved.
It's been moved on second?
Second.
Okay. Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose? The ayes have it. Entertain a motion to approve resolutions 114, formation technology.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor of approving resolution 114, please say aye.
Aye.
I'll entertain a motion to approve resolutions 115 through 151. And Commissioner Brennan, I'm going to give you an opportunity to present resolutions 152 and 153 separately.
Okay.
115 through 159, I'll entertain a motion to approve those, please.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner White?
Thank you. I presented a question. Once again, thanks to district staff, including Chief of Staff Kim Dice-Fossett, for organizing these prompt answers. Question number nine, related to the universal pre-kindergarten program that the district offers. Mr. President, I'd like to ask the superintendent or have the superintendent indicate to us, in that particular question, it indicates 2006, 2007, I don't know if you have my questions here. Enrollment as of Beds Day.
Yes.
I'm a rookie at this.
Beds Day is, it's in October. I don't know the exact date in October.
But what is that? Beds?
Oh, that's a basic educational data system. It's the, we have to report our attendance to the state education department on that day.
All right. So, it says 1,684 children.
Mm-hmm.
That is the number of children enrolled in Universal?
On that day.
On that day.
Right.
And then what is the total 874 represent? That's for this year?
Uh, let's see. So, well, yeah, that doesn't look right. Shirley, does that look, could you help me on this?
Thank you, Dr. Kala.
The 874 is the number of children who happened to be enrolled as of yesterday, when I ran a report of children who have enrolled since the beginning of July. And our goal is to have pretty close to 2,000 children by Beds Day, by the 3rd of October.
So, you hope to exceed that number from last year, 2006, 2007?
Yes, I do.
About 300 or so?
That's the plan.
Dr. Kala, Mr. President, I wanted to acknowledge and thank Dr. Kala for the commercials regarding, or public service announcements regarding universal pre-K enrollment. I'm hoping it has a desired impact, and any money that was spent on those commercials is money well-spent. Thank you.
Thank you. President Garcia?
Commissioner Elliott?
I will vote in favor of resolution 115, but I will remind staff and superintendent, I'd like to get this information prior to the date that, in that we've already started this. Just, it's an issue of integrity, and also, on some level, respect of the board. And in reference, respect to the board. And in reference to resolution 121, I'm going to have to abstain from that, from voting on that resolution.
Well, you can, you can do so when it's your time to vote.
Okay. And then on resolution 125, how many students do we have who are attending Bryan and Stratton College? Dr. Kala, and what grades are attending?
It's 123.
That's one, yeah, that's got, must be a different resolution. 123 you're talking about?
Well, on my sheet is 125. This is the one we got on Friday.
Okay.
This is a reference to the Bryan and Stratton College.
Okay, because we pulled those resolutions, they all changed. So, that's 123.
Okay.
Right. So, you want to know how many?
123 has been pulled.
Did we pull 123?
I'm talking now, 75 students the last year, and we let 75 more in this year.
And the grades? And the grade, all of them?
12.
Okay. Thank you.
It's a different 123.
Questions?
Because we change the numbers on these things.
President Garcia?
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes, I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
The old resolution numbers, 123 and 124, were pulled.
Right.
I'm curious as to why.
Yeah. When we get contracts, I go through all the contracts every, every week, and to look at the value of them from, you know, financial issues, what they're providing. And if I don't have enough information at a late date, I will pull them until I get that information. Because this is almost $200,000 worth of contract, and I didn't have enough information in order to sign those contracts. So, I wanted to make sure that before I have, put my signature on that and present that to you for a resolution, that I have adequate information. So, if I get that information, by next time, it'll be on, it'll be on the next agenda.
Okay. And I also had a question. Let's see, we have three policies that are, that are being offered for resolutions and approval from the board. What is the process for the resolution to get written? Because two of those policies had resolutions prepared for tonight, the code of...
If you, if your committee was going to present a resolution that have been, that have been approved by the committee to forward it to the board, Mr. Luby will be very happy to prepare the resolution for you.
Because only two out of three of the, of the policies had resolutions prepared for tonight, and I was wondering why the third policy?
Mr., I'm almost sure that Mr. Brennan, Commissioner Brennan requested the two resolutions for his committee.
Is that correct, Commissioner Brennan?
Well, I came here this afternoon, and these two resolutions were presented to me, and it was, as I understood it, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Luby, that ideally, they would have been in the resolutions packet, but weren't, and they were presented...
Right.
For this purpose.
Over the, over the last summer, as these things have come up, they've come up from some different directions. We've got a richness of source over, over the last periods. The policy for the Code of Conduct, for example, which is an annual review, the first draft originates in my office, and I did, did a, at the time I did the draft and submitted it to the policy committee, I did it with a proposed resolution. So, they went forward, and that's in the packet, is 148. The other two came from other directions... The other two came from other directions, and tonight, when I looked, or this afternoon, when I looked at the, at the resolution package, I noticed that there wasn't one, although the policies themselves had gone through the policy committee, had come to the board last month, and, and were in there. So seeing this afternoon that there was that gap, and there was not the technical resolution that says we're adopting the policy, I gave Commissioner Brennan quickly the two boilerplate policy, resolutions to do that, because the board acts only by resolution.
Right.
So the substantive material's been before you, it's been under consideration, it came through the policy committee, but it didn't come out in the old traditional source, where it came up the way that this year's Code of Conduct did, which was where it started at my shop.
Is it because you are, are you the liaison to policy? Is that why you were aware of those policies and not the policy that was coming, the amendment to the policy that was coming from QA? Because I just wasn't sure why a resolution wasn't prepared for, for the African and African American Studies Department?
I, I do not know who was working on that policy, my department was not.
All right, I'll offer something from the flow. I just was curious as to the process and where there may have been a hiccup.
Very helpful.
Thank you.
Shirley.
President Garcia.
Yes.
In reference to resolution 117, where we are asking to vote on a dollar amount of 14,500 to 10,000, which is codish, for professional development workshops on an ad-as-need basis, I guess I'm not willing to support this resolution, because it's just not specific enough for me. What if we don't have any professional development workshops? Are we still paying?
No money's paid.
No.
No. It's, that's a maximum amount. If there is a need to go to that, to that location, then the, that location is utilized. If it's not utilized, nothing is paid out.
President Garcia.
So when do we determine if that?
Commissioner Powell has a response for you.
This was the singular resolution that we discussed today before the business meeting started, because we also, in the policy, or in the finance committee, did not feel we had enough information to take action. But it was explained to us, the rationale for using a site that was not one of our schools. It included access to adult-sized classrooms, breakout spaces, as well as auditoriums, and adequate parking. This, as described, would only be used on an as-needed basis, and it does have a ceiling. So there's a, there is an appropriate amount of money set aside in the budget for this, this sort of endeavor. It would complement any number of professional development functions, including superintendent's days, and support it in off-site opportunities. So the finance committee got the answers to the questions we raised, and were satisfied enough to bring it to you today.
Okay. Any other questions?
Just procedural.
Procedure, go ahead.
So it will be necessary for us to vote on this current set of resolutions, and then we will hear from Commissioner Brennan for his two resolutions, and then, at that point, I may offer from you.
Commissioner Brennan's resolution come on their unfinished business.
That will include multicultural.
And then at that point?
And I really don't have a great deal to say about them.
Sure.
Interestingly enough.
Okay, thank you. That answers my question.
If that's any help.
Go ahead, Ms. Louie.
Commissioner, if I can offer a solution to that, you, you do have that situation in the same, in exact same posture as the other two, where, where there were not resolutions that were prepared at the time. My suggestion, then, is when number 153 is offered, which is the adoption of the cellphone policy, then perhaps the best way to do it is to propose a new number 154, which would simply be the adoption of the multicultural policy, policy, I'm not looking, seeing the number.
4350.
4350.
Right, that's my plan. It's just that we had received the resolutions.
Let's just continue the numbers, then.
Right. We have received paperwork up here for the other two.
Okay, we're ready to vote. Commissioner Brennan, how do you vote on resolutions 113 to 115 through 151?
Yes, and we won't be having a lengthy discussion about this, will we? After the, I've cast the vote.
On, on the other two?
Never mind, just kidding. Yes. And I'll try to remember this time.
Commissioner Power, Elliott.
115, 116, 117, 115, 116, yes. 117, no. 118, no. 119, yes. 120, we're, that's being pulled, correct? Am I right?
That's correct.
That's being pulled.
That's pulled.
121, I'm abstaining. 120.
Could you tell us the reason?
Because one of the agencies is the organization in which I'm employed.
Thank you.
Bless you.
122, yes. 123, yes. 124, 125, no. 126.
124 has been pulled.
Oh, it's, this is a different 124.
Wait a minute.
Model secondary schools, that's not one of the ones that's pulled.
Oh, I see. They were renumbered, they were renumbered. Okay, go ahead.
125, no. We passed the question stage. Am I correct?
Yes.
All right. 126, no, excuse me, yes. 127, yes. 128, no. 129 through. 144, yes. 145, I will abstain, because this is my place of employment. 146, yes. 147, no. Am I to continue? Are we, do I need to?
148, 149.
Okay.
150, 151.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Evans?
Yes.
Commissioner Power?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson, I'm sorry.
No problem. Aye.
Fine. And I vote aye, the ayes have it. We'll move on, then, to unfinished business. On their unfinished business, we have a cellphone policy and a Code of Ethics, policy 8332 for cellphone, policy 2160 for the Code of Ethics. We have an amendment to policy 4350, which is up for approval, and that is going to be resolution 153 and.
154.
154. And then we just voted on the Code of Conduct.
Yes, we did.
So we don't have to vote on the Code of Conduct, okay? I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution 152, which is amendment to the District Court of Ethics, policy 2160.
So, second?
It's been moved and second. Any questions or discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose? The ayes have it. I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution 153, which is the newly created cellphone policy, policy 8332. Is there a second? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? None? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose? None? I vote aye, the ayes have it. Commissioner Thompson, you're, we're going to entertain a motion to approve resolution 154, which is an amendment to policy 4350 for multicultural education. Is there a second? Either way, first, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner White, and second by Commissioner Thompson. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Mr., Commissioner White.
Thank you. First of all, we need to, given the resolution, we need to appropriately give thanks to all those folks who are prepared for this particular event and day. We need to recognize Dr. David Anderson, who, for many years, within these very walls, tried to create a culture and an environment that acknowledged the African and African American experience. Now, now undoubtedly, I will forget many people, and was not blessed to know all folks who have fought mightily to make this district more responsive to the, to all people of color, but particularly African Americans. I should mention, only because he is a colleague of mine, Minister Evans, Malik's father, who also, for many years, mightily worked in the battlefields of trying to acknowledge the African and African American experience. And we ought to thank ministers and preachers and people who have labored in the fields for many years, so that our kids, white and black, could understand the wonderful traditions and culture of African Americans. Additionally, there are other folks who in schools have been working on this issue for quite a long time. Leslie Hamilton Rose, Michelle Hancock, who I believe is here this evening. We owe them a great degree of gratitude and thanks. Additionally, while he is not with us any longer, Manny Rivera, who took it upon himself to offer up Michelle Hancock and others, so that a department could be planned even before the policy was in place. Now, now folks should not misconstrue my remarks, but in giving thanks to people, as I do at these meetings, I just do it because it's a truth, it's a fact. And the fact is, many, many months ago, Howard Eagle and Wallace Smith came to me and said, "Mr. White, we don't have an African, African American Studies Department." I have to acknowledge that they began an effort, which you see resulting today. So I have to give them their due and thanks as well. Tom Brennan, who heads, of course, the policy committee, and Shirley Thompson showed great leadership and management ability in moving this policy forward. And finally, we need to thank the members of this community, who, as one speaker said earlier today, waited quite a long time for this very historic and important moment. And I wish to thank, lastly, my colleagues, who I anticipate will wholeheartedly endorse and embrace this policy.
President Garcia.
Commissioner Elliott.
I would just, I don't know if people are aware of this, but I just want to announce that one of the great Afrocentric scholars passed on, Dr. Asa Hilliard. For those of you who may not have been aware, he passed away in Egypt. They believe that he contracted malaria in Ghana, but he was where he loved the most, and that being on the African continent, so I would just pass that on. He's a great educator with respect to Afrocentric education, and so I'd just like to acknowledge that and present that.
Thank you. No other comments or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it.
One in person, privilege?
Question of privilege, Commissioner Powell.
Because we already voted on the Code of Conduct, I missed my opportunity earlier to say that, to add to the dialogue, which was that the policy committee spent a great deal of time talking about the timing of when changes to the Code of Conduct should come before the committee and before the board, so that we could get adequate parental involvement and community input. And some of that dialogue included discussions about the timeliness of, of recertifying the Code of Conduct prior to its publication in the calendar, which would push the date for reconsidering it into the spring of, of each year, instead of in late summer of each year. I hope that that is something that we can do. I think that it, it shows a responsiveness to our constituencies, and it also serves to provide the best, most current data to folks when we provide the single biggest piece of communication we put out to parents, which is our, our school calendar. So it's my hope that we can spend the next few months working the parent community and the broader community to get the help we need to review the calendar, or review the Code of Conduct in time for a spring presentation, instead of a summer presentation.
Thank you. I'll entertain, I'll entertain a motion to extend the board meetings since past 8:30.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And we will continue until we conclude the agenda.
President Garcia.
Commissioner Brennan?
I'd like to just briefly respond to Commissioner Powell's remarks, which I very much appreciate. And I have to confess that I've been sitting up here this evening, and, and didn't really decide until a few moments ago whether I would even vote for the Code of Conduct. And I, and I decided I should, because there's, there's an obligation we have as a body to meet a deadline. But I appreciate and take very seriously the concerns that people in the community have raised, and I think people on the policy committee and on the board have voiced, that we need to have a process that's more timely. Had, had seven board members come up here and voted against the Code of Conduct, that would have been irresponsible. So, so that's why I didn't do it. But the concern is, is extremely valid and important. And sometimes it's the little things that we do that convey to people that their input and their involvement is welcome, that just makes all the difference in the world. And it's easy for us to miss these things sometimes, and it's helpful when they're called to our attention. I don't think there's any purposeful intent to exclude anybody here. I think it's a classic case of something slipping through the cracks. But it's been a good discussion, and I hope that we'll act on it in the future.
Thank you. I, I'd like to appoint Commissioner Elliott to the Finance Committee, and I'd like to reappoint Commissioner Brennan to the Quality Assurance. And I will entertain a motion from the board to ratify those three appointments.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Commissioner Garcia.
Commissioner Elliott.
President Garcia. I just want to, to publicly thank Commissioners Thompson and White for, for, for my participation on the QA Committee. I hope that I lent some information that was useful in, in, in terms of quality assurance, in terms of student achievement, and all of those things. So, and I just wanted to thank you all for your work and, and allowing me to be on that committee. And also, I'm looking forward to working on the Finance Committee, and hopefully that I'll be able to lend something to the Finance Committee. So I'm looking forward to working on that committee. Thank you.
President Garcia.
Commissioner Brennan?
Commissioner Garcia, just briefly, and as I expressed at the Finance Committee meeting, I wanted to thank Commissioner Powell, and Commissioner Evans, and all of the staff on the Finance Committee. It's been terrific working with them. I do think, it's pretty clear what's happened here, Cynthia and I are swapping committee assignments. And I do think she brings a great deal to the Finance Committee. She has displayed an extraordinary amount of interest in these resolutions at this meeting tonight. And this is a good example, I think, maybe, of board members just cooperating a little more with one another. She has a level of interest in the business of the Finance Committee. I'm certainly interested in quality assurance and learning more about that. And this is, will be an opportunity for her, I think, to perhaps sink her teeth in those, into those areas that she has such a great deal of interest in a little earlier, and that will help the business of the board and, and help the, the quality of the work of the Finance Committee. And I wish her well and congratulate her.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. The other.
President Garcia.
Yes, Commissioner Thompson.
I just wanted to repeat my thanks to the contributions that Commissioner Elliott has made at the Quality Assurance Committee table. As I said the other night, finances gain is our loss. Although I won't miss what I anticipate will be shorter meetings. [laughing] Although I won't miss what I anticipate will be shorter meetings (LAUGH) at QA.
Don't count on it, Shirley.
Tell me what I should expect.[604.54][604.54](LAUGH).
You're gonna miss me. Thank you.
Okay, the next, the next item has something to do with a presentation Dr. Calla made under his report, and that, that is regarding the meetings, the statewide meetings. And it just so happens that, that a convention is taking place October twenty-fifth, which is the date of our board meeting. So if any of the commissioners are planning to attend the convention, then we may have to change the date of the next, of the October board meeting.
Commissioner, President Garcia, in listening to Commissioner Powell and Superintendent Kayla, it appears that we are encouraged to attend the meeting in New York. I was not going to attend, but after listening to Commissioner Powell and Superintendent Kayla may want to attend, so maybe we need to have that meeting to be, say, the third Thursday of the month, if, if people...
So, if, if, if we are all in agreement, then we'll change the October board meeting to the third Thursday rather than the fourth Thursday. Commissioner Powell?
Could I offer a different alternative?
Different alternative.
A Tuesday?
By our means.
The issue, keeping in mind that the concept of shifting these dates is in keeping with the business cycle, and if we move it a full week, we are going to interfere with the Finance Committee's schedule and how it approves the resolutions, but perhaps earlier the same week, perhaps a Tuesday night, could accomplish the mission.
I think that's usually board governors' meeting night.
Well, board governors can reschedule.
Okay.
Thank you.[730.04][730.04](LAUGH).
I would just note that that's also the Rochester Education Foundation's annual dinner, Tuesday, October twenty-third. So I, I think this is something that we may need to sort out and...
So, we will, we will poll the board with, with some dates, and, and then we will just announce it based on the result of the polling. That way, we won't have to agree to it right here. Thank you. All...
I have one thank you.
Commissioner Evans.
While we're in the, in the business of thanking people, there's someone that I want to thank that has given a tremendous amount of service to this district as interim Chief Financial Officer, Jim Coney, a gentleman who I have a tremendous amount of respect for. When Darryl Porter was president, he appointed me to get the Office of Auditor General off the ground, and Jim Coney was absolutely instrumental in helping us develop the charter and get that office off the ground, and then shift it over to, as the interim superintendent. As I'm sure folks have read, Vince Carfany will be joining us in September. But I wanted to take this opportunity to thank Jim for his extensive knowledge and experience in this position, and I hope that he will continue to come back and see us on a regular basis. And I feel like Rochester is kind of your, your, your second home. So thank you so much for all your service that you've given.[818.82][818.82](APPLAUSE).
Moving on, that concludes the business portion of our meeting. We're moving on now to speakers.
Before we do that, I can...
Dr. Kayla, of course.
We, we do have some of our appointed administrators, our appointed administrators this evening. See, I learn. I'm slow, but I get it. I, if, if you're, I know you're not all here, but I do want to mention that, you know, tonight we appointed Ruby Smith McLendon to the Assistant Director of Young Mothers.[854.01][854.01](APPLAUSE).
If your family is here, please have them stand up as well.
Dr. Beverly Pringle has been appointed to be the principal of East High School. I know you're out there, Beverly. Rose Marie Urzetta as the Assistant Director of Early Childhood. That's Rose Marie.[878.82][878.82](APPLAUSE). James Palermo is Assistant Principal for School Number Two.[884.26][884.26](APPLAUSE). Carmen Bermudez Myner as Assistant Principal for School Number Twelve.[894.26][894.26](APPLAUSE). Tanya Wilson as Coordinating Administrator of Special Education, Northeast and Northwest College Prep High School at Douglas Campus. Long name.[906.51][906.51](APPLAUSE). Mark Davis for Assistant Principal for Jefferson High School.[913.44][913.44](APPLAUSE). Marion Whitfield, Marion Whitfield is Assistant Principal at Nathaniel Rochester.[921.76][921.76](APPLAUSE). Susan Clark, Academy Director at John Marshall.[927.88][927.88](APPLAUSE). And also not here, Carl Kenia, Academy Director at Monroe High School. And that's it.[937.32][937.32](APPLAUSE).
We're moving on to speakers on other than agenda items, and we have some speakers, and I'll, I'll make the same plea to all of you, please, when you hear the bell sound, you, you conclude your remarks so that we won't have to interrupt you. The first speaker is Mr. Kerry Coleman. Good evening.
I want to start out by saying I'm, again, a true believer that our schools are a reflection of our society. And this, this question is to Dr. Calla. As a parent, as a taxpayer, and with a child in the district, why is it that every time I ask to speak with you or speak to someone representing you, I have this man, Mike Louie, running interference? I pay taxes, I have a daughter, I got legitimate gripes, all right? Forty-six charges here made by your Chief of Staff here, all of them illegal since 2001. I've won my arbitration, I've been illegally fired, the state has deemed that, I've been ostracized, I had cops sitting in front of my house because of what she said. It was a lie. You tell me, what's wrong? Where's, where's the democracy in this? Okay? As I told Mike Louie before, and I truly believe this, and I'm not saying this because I'm African-American and he's, he's Caucasian, but I truly believe this man is a bigot. And I'm not saying it because of what he's done to me and my family, but let's say two words, David Hile. All right? Let's talk about the contracts that he's done behind the boards to you individuals here, that he's snuck in behind the board. What about the, the news articles from the Democrat Chronicle, from the, the deals he's making on the table amongst, behind you guys' backs? Why is he still here? Why is he still here? At $147,000 a year, every type of misconduct has been named here, and he's still here. Same thing with your Chief of Staff. Our parents are being ostracized here, sir. All right? The parents that truly are, that knows the wisdom of what's going on here are basically being ostracized. But I'm gonna let you know right here in your face, Mike Louie, not until my last breath will I give up. Okay? You're the prime example of my ancestors, my father, my grandfather have been fighting against, and you hide behind the letter of law. You had a judge, Judge Renzi, said the same thing to you. You're playing legal gymnastics with our children. Okay? Legal gymnastics. I don't consider my daughter no better than any other parent's kid here, but you know what? They're our future. And it's people out here in this audience, parents and staff members, that's gonna fight. No matter what you do, no matter what she does, okay? It's gonna happen. It's gonna happen. Thank you.[1129.63][1129.63](APPLAUSE).
Mr. Ron Ring.
Good evening, audience. My name is Ron Ring. I'm currently living in an apartment building. For many of us, we're disabled. I do lobbying in local government offices about every two or three weeks for peace, particularly peace in Iraq and for ending poverty in Rochester. Student involvement in formulating curriculum, including some courses I'm gonna list, would help bring about more peacefulness in schools and after-school, in families, and in later life. World peace, stop conflict peacefully. This would lead to more involvement in the United Nations for our U.S. nation. Arms control, the Cold War and arms race is fortunately over, so there's a lot, a basis for spending more on housing, healthcare, food programs for us poor people. Affordable House, Public Works Program, daycare and healthcare, single-payer healthcare insurance, less extensive education, more teaching, peace and love, spiritual love, sister and brother love, and humanitarian spirit. And cooperative economics would be a good way to help bring about less extensive goods and services through the right and the left working together to work out patterns of distributions for all of us. And we need to protest for peace, or at least suggest that peace is reasonable in the Middle East, in Iraq, Sudan, Colombia, and elsewhere. We could teach ecology, how to protect the environment, peaceful process, conversation, dialogue, debate, negotiation, and arbitration, and research problems more. Resynthesize opposing views is a good way to help bring peace, that people could work out their differences in a good peaceful way. And rational reason to think out answers to problems more peacefully. And peacemakers have set an example, Mahatma Gandhi and Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. These people have solved problems for masses of people in a good peaceful way. They set a good example. And we need to protest racism, to pursue peace studies instead, and to help take some of the violence out of sports. Peace-moving people...
(MUTTERING)
Okay, should be allowed in the schools for more favor, more towards equal time. Religion could be included.
Mr. Ring, will you conclude, please?
That's what I'm doing, yeah. Religion could be included if it was an elective, something more intertwined. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for listening.
Mr. Glennie Williams.[1362.83][1362.83](APPLAUSE).
Good evening.
Good evening.
How you doing? I'm back. Well, we're, a couple of things I just gotta do real quick, 'cause you were talking about some key people. I'd like to mention a teacher, 'cause teachers are very important. So your name is a name. I wanna name a name for you to check out for those who don't know it. Her name is Reggie Brown. Reggie Brown. She was a biology teacher at Madison High School in 1963, when Glennie was fat but shorter and younger. And she started the first Black History Course, and one of the first Black History Courses in Rochester City School District, but they made us do it after-school because they thought it wasn't appropriate at the time. So I just want, 'cause when we talk about people like Dr. Anderson, great person, we need to talk about Reggie Brown. She's still around. I think she still even teaches part-time. But tonight, we're here to talk about moving on and trying to engage this district in working with the parents of the district. And so you all received an invitation to come to Cafe on 25th of August. Only a few of you have signed up to come. I'm here again tonight to ask you to come. We need to have a conversation, as this board commissioner over here said, a continued conversation, where we do not simply talk at each other like this meeting, we talk for two minutes, and most of you dismiss us, and then we listen to you. And I gotta admit, like I saw somebody go to sleep, one of the commissioners tonight. Sometimes I go to sleep with these, sort of talk at each other meetings. So we're inviting you again to come out on the 25th and join us in a conversation, in a change, where we can work together and design stuff that works for our kids. Let me make just two points for you about that. We really think, when, when we see that you, we're just looking corrective action. And when the plan comes out, and we really believe, we talk to a lot of parents, most parents don't even know what it is. I tried to get the look at it up on your district site. Finally, this week, it is up there, but again, it is done so poorly in terms of being available to parents to understand, parent-friendly. We've got to start, when we do policies and design major initiatives like that, they've gotta be talked about in a way that parents can work with them and understand. Two, another initiative that you're working on, that we helped, AQE, which I want my colleague to tell you about, to, to remember, we helped get a major amount of money, millions of dollars, you know, this year, Superintendent. We helped make that happen. We've helped work with Senator Robach and some other place people to make that money happen here in Rochester. And then you put together a plan, and we don't even know about what the plan is. Those are the kind of things that we are trying to work with you on the 25th, so that we talk with each other. Because when we work, go to...
Will you, will you conclude?
Yeah, I know you're gonna tell me. When we work with you and go to Albany and help you get major money, we'd like to be able to also come back and help develop the changes to make it happen.
Thank you.
We'll hand out a letter, I won't even, we won't even read it to you, so to save some time, that we will look forward to each one of you commissioners coming on the 25th and having a continued dialogue with parents. Please come, because that's the only way that we can have successful things and not have, find out things by split.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
...gonna happen or come.
Thank you.
Please. You can, you can give me the couple of extra seconds.
Everybody, everybody gets a minute.
You can sit up here and try to talk over me, but I'm great at talking over people. So you can do that if you like, or you can take a minute, just listen to me for a minute.
Mr., Mr. Gary Thompson.
I will guarantee you, you won't out-talk me, and you won't talk over me. So if you give me a minute, we will all be done, we can all go.
Mr. Gary Thompson.
I will go. So anyway, thank you for that time, and please come. We really wanna work with you, because they're our kids, and we want them to learn. Thank you. And we'll be seeing you on the 25th, New York.[1631.13][1631.13](APPLAUSE).
Well, that's okay. You gotta express yourself when necessary. We believe in that. Good evening. My name is Gary Thompson. I'm the president of the local chapter of the NAACP, and our concern this evening is with the selection process of our superintendent. The local chapter and the community of Rochester, New York, are outraged at the flawed process that's being used in choosing a superintendent for the Rochester City School District. We strongly believe that the process is closed to the public for political maneuvering of a specific candidate, and that the process was rushed to cover that political maneuver. Therefore, the local chapter is demanding that we start the search process all over again to include community residents and identified leaders within our community. This closed process concept makes us, as residents, believe that there are side deals going on within, within the decision. Therefore, what the NAACP is saying, we're firmly stating that if there's any evidence of side deals during this process, we would immediately launch a federal investigation.[1710.83][1710.83](APPLAUSE). Our, our interim superintendent, Dr. William Calla, has agreed to stay on as long as, as long as it takes to find the best possible person. Therefore, there's no rush for an immediate decision. Dr. Calla has made several systematic changes within the organization and has received high praises in the community for his work, and that was demonstrated earlier. Therefore, we are in support of extending the stay of Dr. Calla while the appropriate and legitimate search continues. Our children are our most precious commodity. Therefore, we are responsible for, for protecting their quality of education and ensuring that the best possible person is leading their charge. Again, the local chapter would like a fair chance for our children in this district, and therefore, we're demanding that a new search begin for our superintendent for the City School District. Thank you. Therefore, we are in support of extending the stay of Dr. Cala while the appropriate and legitimate search continues. Our children are our most precious commodity. Therefore, we are responsible for protecting their quality of education and ensuring that the best possible person is leading their charge. Again, the local chapter would like a fair chance for our children in this district, and therefore, we're demanding that a new search begin for our superintendent for the City School District. Thank you. Beke Gouvea.
Dr. Cala, President Garcia, members of the board. I want to take this opportunity to congratulate you for the selection of such an outstanding interim superintendent. Dr. Cala, in just a few short months, has demonstrated for us what true leadership is all about. He's a no-nonsense sort of guy who understands that children really do come first. For Dr. Cala, "children first" is not just a popular, overused phrase, but a core belief. As you move forward to the selection of a permanent superintendent, I want to thank you for your eventual understanding that a public process is necessary. Any candidate worthy of being named the superintendent of the Rochester City School District should not be afraid of a public process. This community cares too much about the education of our young people not to be involved in the process. Given the fact that Dr. Cala has established such a positive working relationship with so many groups in such a short period of time, I would hope that you would look to the, look to the candidate to possess many of the same qualities as Dr. Cala. These, some of these would include, but not be limited to, their leadership ability, knowledge of curriculum and instruction, understanding of and support for early childhood education, with a long-term investment in this community, ability to work collaboratively with a wide variety of stakeholders, and understanding the importance and history of collaboration in the Rochester City School District. They must possess an understanding that building relationships with students is a critical component of student success. Without the building of relationships, student achievement will not improve. In closing, I want to thank you for understanding the need for this community to be heard. We must be a collective voice for our children. They deserve only the best, and an open process will help to ensure a positive outcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next board meeting will be September 27 at 6:30 P.M. If you need information, please contact, see the district website. I'll enter the motion for adjournment.
So move.
Everybody, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Meeting is adjourned.